... with extremely sensitive.
Oh, good morning, Mr. Meister.
Good morning, sir. It is nine o'clock. We have two, we have two topics today. First, we're going to talk about, since the budget process is over, and we've had to delay this for a few weeks because of other subjects, but I would like Lorian to kind of just get your opinion, and she's doing this organizationally too, going around and asking people's opinion on how the budget process worked this year. So it's a chance for you guys to weigh in, and she'll focus on the areas that impact the commission the most, starting with the retreat, the hearings, the public meetings, and then the actual adoption day. So, and this is your chance to give your opinions on how the budget process works. And then, just to let you know, we're already thinking of next year's budget. We're coaching staff and department and division directors to reach out to employees to get their input on, on what the next budget should look like. And of course, as you know, our strategic plan is on the downhill slope now, and we'll have that done hopefully within a month or two, which will also give us guidance and direction on, on the budget, so. And then, the second thing we'll talk about will be the at-large advisory board appointments. Justin Wagner will lead that discussion on that policy that we talked about a couple of weeks ago in the commission meeting. So, without though, Lorian, if you want to talk us through the budget?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Like Tom said, I have about five key points to get your feedback on, so I'm just going to jump right into those. The first one is the budget retreat. This year, we did two half-days at the LETC. We started with some forecast presentations to set up the discussion, and then we had some hot topics for the upcoming budget cycle. So I want to get your feedback if you liked that format, that kind of location for the retreat.
Very good. Commissioners?
Comments?
That comment that being, trying to learn quickly, I really liked that retreat. I thought that was one of the best things. I had no idea that we were lacking far behind in employees' salaries comparable, things like that. Seeing all the things that the challenges were on the big picture helped me personally try to help prioritize, and knowing that we're going to have to do cuts on some, or less on some, and some, it was good. For me, it was really good. And the place was fine.
I'll echo Commissioner Meister's comments. The subject matter is definitely appropriate. I like the location, and I like it being broken up into a couple of days rather than us trying to set through something all at one time. Because I don't know if, at the end of the day, a couple of years ago, I didn't know if I was learning anything, or if I was just trying to stay awake.
I would agree. I think it's done very well. I think the staff did a tremendous job. The only thing I don't like about it is the name sounds like it's supposed to be fun. It sounds like it's a vacation, you go do something fun, you know? But, you know, it's a serious matter, and the idea of a retreat, I think, is misleading. But other than that, it's really fantastic.
Or we should call it budget flogging, or...
I don't know, something like that would be much more appropriate.
We'll get you. Okay.
Okay. The second one was the BOCC budget hearings. This year, the division heads presented, and their department heads came to answer any kind of questions you had. We had it here in the commission room, it's set up like a commission meeting. So was that the kind, the right kind of presenters? Did you like the amount of detail and the length of the presentations?
Feedback on that?
I think it's the very best part of our budget process. I think it's excellent.
I like that you had, I'm trying to think, trying to recall, instead of all, every department talking to us, it was the key people, what do you call them?
The division heads.
We had a little internal discussion on that very subject of who that should be, and so you prefer division heads covering multiple departments.
With the subject matter experts, which is the department heads there, ready to address and support the overall. Personally, I like that.
I understand why we do it in this room, the way we do it. It just seems a lot more formal than, I don't know.
I agree, that's what I was going to say. I don't like sitting up at the bench talking about it.
I don't like sitting up there, I agree. It looks like, I don't know, it presents a view of the commission that, hey, we're the almighty powerful sitting up here, and you're coming in to talk to us.
It's like a courtroom, and I do not like courtrooms.
You know? So I don't know if there's a, I know we have to have it for the video, and for us recording it and so forth, so I don't know what the solution is.
Well...
It's just so darn formal.
By the time we do this again, we will have equipment acquired which would allow you to sit here and see a screen, like we did when we did the building discussion from a month or two ago. We're acquiring the equipment where we can run staff meetings like that, so we could set the room up. We have to video and record them, clearly. I mean, it's, that's a, some of the public is very interested in that process. So it's, from an audiovisual perspective, it's important to stay in this room, but we can rearrange and set you more like a setting like this, where it's a discussion kind of, instead of a talk to, kind of.
Let me just throw it there, I appreciate the comment that you don't want to be the high and mighty, and I agree with that. I would just tell you that pragmatically is more convenient for me, because I've got big tables spread out, I don't have legs under my feet here, okay? I can write down notes, we all have our own microphones. There's some logistics of that that are very conducive to what we're doing, and I do understand your point, though.
If we could create those logistics out here, though, and not have you set it, actually, yeah, no, you've got it today too, okay? Some of you have leg challenges. But if we could do away with that and get you hot mics at each spot, would you be, that's the key?
I'm open to whatever you come up with, that's fine.
Any other comments?
So I probably tend to agree with what Commissioner House said, on the budget process, it seems like we have papers and added papers. So for a room like this, it could be...
Yeah. Okay.
I know, I respect what they're saying, but it does allow you a little bit of privacy to make your notes and absorb, even though maybe your neighbor can watch as well, but I think it's just cumbersome unless you come up with someone.
Okay. We'll, we'll work on it, come up and, maybe that's the best solution. I hear what you're saying, though, your points were...
But I like the, I like the format. Just after the question was, back to your format, I like that part.
Okay. The next one was the preliminary recommended budget. That's where each of you came up to the conference room on the eighth floor. We had those, our one-on-one sessions, and we walked through the spreadsheet that showed you the budget team's preliminary decisions for the recommended budget. Did you like that format? Was it appropriate for that, getting that information and the timing on that?
It allowed for more one-on-one conversation, allowed you all to hear specifically from each of us what we thought personally was our neutral button, hot button, cold button.
I like that, because I get a detailed look exactly where we're at. But the only concern I have is I don't know what the other four commissioners said, so I don't know what's coming up in the future. I don't know where their hot buttons are, where their concern might be, so I, I don't, I don't know how we get that information across.
Okay.
The other thing that I think is important is, I mean, when you guys do this five times, by the time the fifth person gets there, they have all the information, so that, I mean, you guys might know exactly, I mean, to your point, you might know exactly what all of us, all of our questions are, so I think that fifth commissioner kind of has a leg up, because you guys have heard all the concerns, you know what to ask other commissioners. I think that's with anything that you guys brief us with, I've heard that before. We joked in the hallway that you guys, oh, by the time we get to the third person, we already know everything that someone else is going to ask. Does that even make...
Yeah, no, you're right. There is, so you're saying you always want to be the fifth commissioner, is that...
Yes.
No. I, you know, that's a, I think we tried very carefully in that meeting to not maybe talk about what other commissioners, we just want to hear what you have to say, but it's a challenge, clearly.
Well, and I'm not implying that you're telling, that's not what I'm saying, I'm just saying that you guys can kind of...
Yeah.
That's the question that I always ask, because they've clearly done this more than me, and it is nice to hear what their questions are, just simply for a new commissioner, because I'm sitting here trying to figure out, like, what I thought that, you know, what would improve in the budget, and it just all went by so quickly that I don't really, nothing even comes to mind, other than the formality I don't like, because I feel like presenters like you, it's intimidating, this room is intimidating. And if we have a more informal format, I think that it won't be as intimidating. I mean, when you're coming up and asking for four million dollars, you know, maybe it would be easier if it was in a less formal format.
Okay.
I mean, I'll ask for four million dollars, but it's easy money, so we don't want to add anything. Okay, well, maybe not.
Well, it's generally only Spears, and we'll just put him at the end, so. If we could, Chairman, back to your point, I think the one-on-ones are important, but if we could somehow summarize those meetings so you would all know what each other's hot buttons issue, issues are, before it actually gets, because, let's let Lorian carry the rest of the process through, and let me think on that a little bit, because I think the next time that you find out hot button issues, the way it's currently set up is during the actual ratification day, and that's, we want to talk about that, too. So, go ahead, Lorian, keep it moving.
Okay. The next one is public hearings. We had the two public hearings, one in the morning and one in the evening, and an online public hearing. Communications also did a lot of social media, and Van has some stats on the public engagement.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Van Williams with Communications. I'm going to show some information regarding social media and traditional media coverage. Give you a chance to get your hand out there. Overall, the numbers were, were great. Across social media platforms, we saw significant increase in reach and engagement over the past two years. Coverage from traditional media, primarily local TV stations and the Eagle, and local radio stations, that coverage was pretty solid, steady, and I think that suggests that the, the budget process was fundamentally sound. We didn't get reports about a lack of transparency or public meetings. When we looked at our Meltwater media report, the tone, the sentiment was largely positive to neutral. And then, you drill down a little bit on the, the videos that we posted on social media, you'll see that the county's emphasis on behavioral health is starting to gain some traction with that audience. If you look just at our Facebook videos, three of the top videos were related to behavioral health. The aberration there was the county manager's video, which...
That's not an aberration.
That's right. Came in third, and I think that's a good sign, because that was our, our first video, and it got good numbers as well. So Twitter, same thing, behavioral health, good numbers. And that's it.
One thing I'd like to just mention about, I mean, the public forum, I know it was held in the evening, but again, going back to just the intimidation of this room, of the courthouse, is there a way that we could have it, say, at the zoo or some other place, that we could, we could open it up so it isn't as intimidating for the public to come in? I mean, maybe we would get more engagement. If we're going to have it at night, we all have to come up here anyway. And I don't like parking in the parking garage at night, even if it is at six o'clock. I don't know, maybe there is a way to engage and be more friendly to our public than what we've done in years past.
I'll add one more thing about social media. We're seeing that the shorter animated videos tend to get good reaction from our audience, and so we'll keep doing that kind of work.
Anything else on the public hearings, the format or timing or amount of them? The last one is budget adoption day, and we have the levy live and people making motions. Was that the right process? Did you like that?
Comments? Levy Live works well, I appreciate that. What I don't feel comfortable with are this flurry of last-minute motions that we don't have any idea that are coming up, that haven't been staffed through the staff, that are asking us to make four million dollar decisions in two minutes' time. It's just absolutely not the way that we ought to be doing business, in my opinion, on trying to be good stewards of taxpayers' dollars. If, if we've been working six months of budget, and to learn about things at the, from the bench, it's just not the appropriate way to be budgeting.
I would agree that it's kind of, you see it around other governments as well, what they call it, making sausage at the bench. It lends itself to say, you know, how is the, how are we as an organization? If we had an item that's a hot item, should have it at a staff meeting, or kind of really fully vet as it goes into the, as it churns through the budget process. I think you all understand, I'm kind of a, I'm kind of a fan of sticking to the process and the exceptions to the, after the fact. I, it may happen, it may, maybe it's happened in the past. But I think the public image, it challenges the public to think, wow, they, so they do all this, and then, six minutes to go, you're doing a, well, if we do this, it affects that. I'm just not real, I wasn't real comfortable with a couple of, a couple of that. All in all, I think everything, the budget process was, was very good. And I, and I think that day could have been as much as a, well, here it is, we've churned it, you may have some strong feelings, or maybe we could each voice our feelings about something, what was, didn't really go, what we thought should have been, one individual or not, and just say, so let's make sure we keep that in reserve for the year, or keep it on the budget item for real discussion the next year, or something like that. Obviously, there's emergencies that come up during the year, but, so I, I'm just worried, more worried about the public image that it, that it portrays.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. With all due respect, I've, I've been here now in past five budgets, and I think every budget I've been involved in, we've made changes on last day, sometimes smaller, sometimes bigger. I think that is the process. It's, it's up to us to do the very best job we can to be process-driven, to come up with a good proposed budget, but that's our chance to make changes. That budget was given to us essentially by staff through a lot of meetings, and they did a great job, don't get me wrong, but it's our chance as elected officials to change what we're handed. And every budget I've ever been involved in, we've, and that was at the state level and as, and at the local level here, that's a chance for the elected officials to make changes, to make it what they want. Even if, even if the motion doesn't pass, at least then, their electorate, their constituents understand that they did what they could to, to do something they, they believed in, and I think that is a good process. I think the, the public does respect that. It's important that we maintain decorum and respect amongst each other, but I don't think that, I don't think it's a bad public image for us to, to have discussions on the bench and, and have motions, even with, whether it passes or doesn't pass, I think people appreciate the fact that we have dialogue in public, open meetings. I have concerns when someone brings up a budget, and no one makes any discussion, and they pass it without a change, or that even proposed change. Makes me wonder whether they really, you know, are trying to put their fingerprints on the thing they passed at the end of the day. So I, I think what our process is, is actually good. I think that the most important thing is we have decorum and respect in how we treat each other, but these are good discussions, and with respect to the, the four million dollar surprise motion, that shouldn't be a surprise. I've been talking about this for several years, and I did go through staff, and I had the motion drafted by our legal team, and, and we did bring it up in a staff meeting, and the reality is, I, I felt strongly enough to bring that up as an item of discussion, whether it passed or not doesn't really matter. What really does matter is that I believed in it, and I had the respectful opportunity to present that publicly and let people be known on where they stand on the issue. That's fine, that's, that's a good process, there's nothing wrong with that. And every, every elected official ought to have a right, at some point, to, to adjust our most important thing we do in a very public, open way, respectfully, so that we have our, our chance to direct county affairs. I think that's, that is, that is a good process, there's nothing wrong with that. And if you're suggesting that we don't make motions on day of adoption, because that's somehow a negative public perception, I would have to, again, I would respectfully disagree with that. I think the public appreciates that discussion and the fact that we adjust things that we strongly believe in. So, again, I'll just say, I think the process is very good, I think what we do is great, and I think Lindsey do a great job, Levy Live handles it, you guys are ready for everything, our, our legal staff does a good job in helping us prepare motions, and our staff does a good job with staff meetings, discussion things. Nothing I brought up this year was a surprise, really, and it should not have been a surprise, because we talked about it many times in the past. Thank you, Chairman.
I'm not saying that it's a surprise. We'd been asking for the pug mail for discussions on that for some time, but we needed to go through the staff so we'd know what the trade-offs were, and we know what the exact cost was, we'd know the details on it, so it's, I don't know that that was appropriate at, at a budget hearing that day, when we're trying to make a decision on something that we'd never had the staff present the, the study on it, so. And I agree with you that we need to be able to have discussions at that last day to make final tweaks and be ready to go. What we've got to be cognizant of, as we're getting into that last day, is what the impact is on the staff. If we know what's coming down the line, we ought to be able to let the staff not be in, working until eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night, trying to get this flurry of, of motions ready for the last minute. So I, I believe that we have a responsibility as commissioners to, to protect our staff from trying to jump through hoops at the last minute to, to make statements from the bench.
Can I voice, I, I respect what you're saying, Commissioner Howell, and if, if we respect each other, and as long as, I think, I'm just realizing that maybe some of these that have happened in the past, and then what happened last, is, if they want to, if a commission wants to voice something, somewhat knowing that it, A, might fail, or B, not even get a second, then so be it, and it allows the commissioner to, to say something, and as long as there's respect, and an emotion happens, and knowing full well it might not even get a second, or it might not pass, then, then it is what it is. I can't, I can't ask an elected, fellow elected to only behave this way or not, so I totally respect that. As long as we all know that if you throw one out there, it may not...
And honestly, me personally, I don't really want to vet it to find out what's going to happen with that motion. I, I believe it, I'll articulate my reasons why I believe it, and if people support the idea, or if they want to defer the decision, that's fine, but these, these discussions ought to happen in the open, and, and I shouldn't necessarily have some absolute assurance in my mind, because I've somehow connected dots somehow, that I know this is going to pass or not pass if I do this. I think the reality is, these discussions belong in the open and, and the public, that's good, that's good government. And I remember, just, I'll take, I'll just tell you a quick story, you know, when I was elected to the State House, I was one of 55 members that were elected that year, and we all, a lot, many of us ran on the idea, we're going to repeal the one cent sales tax, it was the three-year one cent sales tax, and we were like, that's the issue. And we, you know, we, we built a bill out there, we wanted to have a debate and a vote. We knew it probably wouldn't pass, we wanted to have a vote, and our leadership said, you know what, we're going to let this come above the line, we'll have the debate. We had a debate for like four or five hours on that, maybe longer, six hours, whatever it was. And we had many, many motions, and it was a very long debate, but at the end of the day, I felt respected, and I think my constituents can say, you know what, you did your best, you weren't successful, but we, you know, you, you're just one of 125, you can't make it happen on your own, we understand that, we, we appreciate your service and, and your passion for this issue that you ran on. And the reality is, I'm very passionate about seniors. It's fine, I think we all are. I'm not saying anybody in this room is not passionate about seniors, but I care deeply about the topic, and I, I feel like I owe it to people to do my very best to bring, highlight an issue that I feel like we could do a little bit better on. It's, it's just not, it's just me, my personal opinion, but, you know, respect, I respect my colleagues, the discussion on the casino, Greyhound was fine, I totally support that. That was a great discussion, that was good government by having that discussion, and I think it's fine to have discussions about seniors or pug mills, or whatever the issue is. That's, that's good government. We ought to have those discussions in public. The things each of us are passionate about, mental health, whatever, whatever the issue is, we ought to have those discussions in public. If we can't reach a consensus or pass a motion, that's okay. We ought to respect everyone in the room enough to say, these discussions are good, and, and there's nothing scary about having a discussion, and if we have, discuss it and nothing happens, it's just fine. I'm okay with that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
I just think one thing, as, as people who work in government, you know, for the past, I guess, going on nine months now, we have to stop assuming that people know what we're talking about. If we really want to connect with our constituents and the people at large, we have to really thoroughly explain things, and the one thing about this pug mill, and I tell you, nine out of 10 people that I talk to about it, related to dogs. I mean seriously, I'm just being serious with you, because people don't know what it is. And so, that, that I think is really important for us to understand. We are here doing this every single day, all day long, we eat and breathe this, at least I have been. I just really feel like we have to make sure that people understand what we're doing, and that, that's really where I'm coming from, because as I try to explain it to someone, I have to really understand it myself. And so if I don't really understand it, that means I can't explain it well, which means somebody is not going to understand what I'm talking about. So that's where I really want us to start thinking, you know, speaking to people who are our bosses, right? Let's hope for they understand things. That, that's really what I hope that people understand, is we have to do a better job of really explaining what we do.
I agree, Commissioner Cruz, I think it's, it's right, we sometimes don't realize we talk things in a different level and different way, that we don't understand, we're not being, we're not being understood, understood by the public, because we assume too much, perhaps. I agree with that.
Lorian, best, I'm going to put you on the spot here on some dates, and if we could just figure out, when we did the, what, what date this year did we get estimated valuations in?
June 15th.
And what date, time period did we do the one-on-ones with commissioners up on eight?
Around June 18th.
Okay, and then the recommended budget was in, what was our drop dead for recommended budget?
June 20th.
Okay, so we have a period from June 20 to ratification day, which is almost two months, where, and we now know, we've had the one-on-ones with you all, and we probably, you're right, Commissioner Cruz, we probably know what the hot button issues are for all of you. So we have a series of staff meetings Tuesday, this kind of setting, where, to Commissioner House's point, if pug mill come, is a hot topic for him, we could put that on an agenda in a, in an open setting like this, and, and vet it, and talk about it, or any issue, aging, or, or whatever the topics that we learn going through the one-on-ones with the, after we've got recommended budget done. Because, I mean, recommended budget, what I always tell the public is, we try to get it 95% right, but the commissioners come in and finalize that last 5% and finish it off with whatever is important to, to you as electeds. So that's, it's never our goal to give you a document that you just all vote on, I would be shocked if that happened, and I don't think that's the way the process should run. But this last 5%, and back to the chairman's point, I'd rather, instead of doing it all on the Monday or Tuesday before the actual ratification, we do this over that series of essentially almost two months we have there, to bring complex topics that you want thoroughly analyzed into this setting, do it publicly, so people could see it, and that way, and it's still, you still make whatever motions you want to make on, on budget day, we would never want to take that from you. But that way, at least, I think that all the other commissions, I always feel, I don't want any of you to be surprised up there ever with things that are coming before you as best we can. So at least everybody knows that we have a hot topic that is important to a commissioner. So I'd just throw that out there for consideration, we don't have to make a decision on that today, but that does make it a little easier on staff, because all of you want analysis, all, all five of you do, and sometimes when we have to do analysis on that Monday, Tuesday before, I, I worry that we don't get things done for you properly, and that we give you thorough information, and we're always trying to give you thorough information. So if we could spread that out over a few weeks, I think it would be beneficial to, to budget staff and... budget staff and legal staff and manager staff. So. You can?
A timing perspective, I think the only thing that concerns me about trying to spread things over a couple of weeks is the fact that we do have that last update challenge, and that's something that we ran into this year in the discussion about aging because the same day we present the recommended budget is the same day that the commission approves a resolution stating what the maximum levy is by fund. And so, it takes away, if, should we spread it out that late or wait that late in the game? That would be one thing, that would be a concern to me, is we wouldn't be able to actually respond to what they wanted in a way that makes good sense.
Well, what you're saying there though is that we have, I mean, we fixed them into once they find like. What that budget number is going to be, then all of a sudden, any further discussion or tweak that they have, we either have to get in the contingent or we have to cut something else. And I don't know that we can ever avoid that. We have to.
The main hearing. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let us have a shot on this as a staff to, and we've got some months here to figure this out, but I just wanted to have the discussion. Lorian, are you, is there anything else commissioners on the budget process that we missed or we could do better?
I think at the end of the budget cycle, all five commissioners expressed their appreciation to the staff for the amount of time and effort that was put into it. We truly appreciate what you all do for us to get us to the point that we can adopt a budget that hopefully meets the needs of Sedgwick County residents. But, again, I think all the commissioners believe that we've got a great staff and we appreciate what they do for us.
Thank you, Chairman. And I appreciate Van's comments. To really, as long as the public has faith in us and that we're transparent, that means a lot, I think, to you as commissioners. So, we're clearly hitting the mark on that aspect as well. So, anything else, Lorian? Thank you. The second topic is the at-large advisory board appointments, and this was the discussion that came up a couple of weeks ago in a BOCC meeting when we were making this at-large MAPC appointment. So, on the agenda for tomorrow is that appointment is coming back on for consideration by the commission and adoption of a policy. And Justin Wagner has done a nice job of creating a draft, and I think, do you guys have copies of that yet or have been? I think you'll get copies of the policy. We have way more at-large appointments than I even thought we did. When Justin actually created the spreadsheet, there's probably a two or three dozen of these. So, this policy, I'll just remind you, there's two kinds of appointments to advisory boards. One, you make individually as commissioners that are within your district. That's not what we're talking about today. I don't think there's anything wrong with that process. These are the at-large appointments that you as a body have to make, and so, this is our first run at a policy and a signup mechanism. So, the only thing I will tell you before Justin starts is, we want to automate this to some degree and get Lisa and Carol a little bit away from that three-ring binder. We want to put something online on the system that's easier for them to manage, easier for citizens to access, easier for the commission to look at and review more expeditiously. But for tomorrow, we won't have the automation and the technology of that figured out. We do, we would like to move forward with the policy though if it meets your needs. So, with that, Justin, you want to take a go over?
Sure. Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. I know you've got a handful of documents there in front of you, but I'll do my best to kind of summarize what's in the policy that's attached to the resolution that's going to be in front of you tomorrow. And as Tom kind of indicated, what we're talking about here is at-large appointments that are recommended for appointment by the county in general as opposed to you as individual commissioners. It's very easy to go to one commissioner and say, okay, you get two appointments to this board. Who would you like to have on it? It's not as simple when we're talking about at-large appointments. So, what's proposed here is a process, I think, consistent with Commissioner Cruz's motion that she made two weeks ago to clarify and have, and really in the purpose statement talks about promoting involvement, raising community awareness, encouraging diversity and ensuring transparency in these appointments, is that about 60 days before the end of each term, Lisa and Carol will be tasked with tracking the ends of the terms of appointees and notifying communications staff to let them know that a term is about to end. Then communications staff would post an advertisement, and the policy says, however communications would deem appropriate, whether on the county website, on social media. I know I talked with Van Williams. He has some ideas about things that could be done from a social media perspective. They would advertise the position, include details, potential if there are any qualifications requirements, for example, and then also have an application form, which you have the, let's say, newly created, and Tony Giuliano did a really good job of putting that together, newly created application form that would be used for all the boards and the folks could apply for these vacancies. The idea being to, again, raise awareness so that people know about these positions. And then approximately 30 days before the end of that appointment's term, the applications would all need to be turned in either to the county commissioner's office or the county manager's office or staff, and then obviously we'd make sure they all get to the right place. And then Tom would bring these back to you for a public discussion, probably during a BOCC staff meeting, kind of like you guys did a few weeks ago with the MAPC at-large appointments. I know Tom stated on the fourth, the idea would be to kind of follow the process that you guys utilized in discussing those appointments. And the, you know, the aim would be if there's an ability to arrive at a consensus for what the recommendation would be, you could do that. But if you wouldn't arrive at a consensus, you could certainly just put it on an open agenda item with either a couple of names recommended or perhaps with no names recommended, and you guys would all discuss it and possibly vote on the item. The idea here, again, as the chairman stated on the fourth, would be not to disparage any applicants or speak ill of them. You'll notice that that's both in the policy and on the application form where thanking them for their service because these would-be public volunteers who provide valuable services to the county. And I, there is also a table, as Tom mentioned, that includes, this was our best shot to put, I mean, there's a lot of advisory boards for the county, to put all of the at-large positions for boards that the county has, and there are quite a few along with their end-of-term dates. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this policy in more detail if you have them.
Questions for Justin?
I don't have any questions. I have sort of a comment. So, I was speaking to a couple of city council members over the past, last week, as we had a lot of time to talk to each other at the City to City trip, and they mentioned that they have an application process for all of their boards, not just at-large appointments. So, I wonder, you know, in an act of transparency, I wonder how we could, as a new commissioner, when I came on, it was like, oh, my gosh, there's so many boards. How do I get the information to Lisa and Carol so that, you know, they're like, oh, Commissioner, I need the email, or I need this, or I need that. It's one way to have one place regardless of if it's my individual appointment or if it's an at-large appointment, that everybody go, they fill out their own information. It doesn't, it puts it on them to apply. We get all their info, and then it goes right to whoever it needs to go to, and it takes it off of us and everybody else to collect their information, that kind of thing. So, I would like to propose that in addition to this. The other thing, I mean, and that just really coincides with our partners across the street.
Let me comment on that, Commissioner. One of the things that we were doing on the fly the last couple of weeks after Justin developed the template of the policy was we talked about the automation and the technology of this piece, the city's product, what's that called, Van? Not on base, it's on board. That's the software product that they use to manage their appointments. And it's like, it's not a terribly expensive piece of software, $4,500 or something.
$5,000.
Yeah. So, we threw that to Wes basically to look at that piece of technology and to determine if he could do anything in-house, which would be close or get accomplished what you want to get done, which is automate it, make it easier for all of us, including staff and commissioners. So, we're still, we're not going to give up on that. We're going to look at that component of how we automate this process.
So, what time, when should I expect something back to me in regards to where we're at with that?
Well, we're working with communications now. We already have walk-up public facing forms that the public can fill out, which I think addresses what you were talking about, where it's just available to the public. Fill out the form, it's submitted to the county, people on the county side will review. Once a decision is made by the county commission or whoever needs to make that decision, we can publicly place that on a public facing website of all of our boards, similar to what MABCD does have as a public facing.
Yeah.
So, we can come close to what the city has in-house very quickly.
Okay.
And then we can circle back around with our content management solution and hopefully automate a lot of that process to where there's not that manual process in between the applicant being awarded, like something annually to communications or my staff, putting it out on the website.
Okay.
So, we have several options of doing that in-house.
Wes, is it fair to say we could come back to staff in maybe two to four weeks and give an update on this? Is that okay, Commissioner?
And Commissioner Cruz, I would also add that, and I know this doesn't quite get to everything that you're stating, but the application form isn't, is not just included for at-large boards. It would be for any boards. So, let's say tomorrow you guys would approve this policy. I realize the policy doesn't address the commissioner-specific board appointments, but I think each commissioner could certainly refer folks to this county application form, just as county staff could, and say, hey, this is our, this is our form that we would utilize for applying for any advisory board. So, that certainly could be done, not saying we couldn't do something more robust, but...
Would this have, would this form have the ability to attach a resume? Because I hate filling stuff out when I already have it in a PDF. I mean, would that be, would you guys be okay with that?
I was going to mention that.
Sure. And I think we could.
I mean, some people may not want to, but if I don't know that person and this is all I have, no resume, it's, but I think at the city, they can attach a resume as well.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, that's, and even make it their option if the individual wants to. Sometimes, sometimes they don't have much of a resume.
Additionally, I wonder, like, with this, it says, and this is just kind of language, but letter C, it says, "Communications staff shall then immediately advertise." I wonder, I mean, we're like notifying. I don't know that we're, you know, I mean, that's, sorry, that's just.
No, that's, I think that could.
You know, if such notification shall be included and, you know, I don't know that this is an advertisement.
Justin, we may want to change that to like promote.
Yeah. Promote it probably.
Promote it across our platform.
I mean, because we'll do the due diligence of notifying the public, but I mean, they have to then react to it and...
And I think that'd be a fair, you know, tomorrow, if you deemed appropriate to make that motion, I think that's certainly a good change.
The resume part was one of my thoughts as well, and I agree, putting it for even our own personal, because the experience across the street was that, that we would get, hey, this, he would even come in randomly, maybe a library board appointment's not even around for two more years, but somebody's interested in it so they can apply and of record. So, it comes to that, individual or at-large. So, I think that's good. The other thing, but of note, is that some of these appointees, oh, maybe especially in the refrigeration, I mean, a lot of these appointees have to have a qualification, and I guess we're comfortable somehow that could all be vetted out. You just can't apply to be on the plumbing board without meeting whatever that opening might be.
I think that when they, the building and construction appointments are the most challenging, and because all of them are at-large for you. But I think that if we had either an application process where the resume, where they have to be a master plumber, for example, that comes out in the resume and you would know, and in fact, I would like to create a mechanism where staff could even, if they don't qualify, meet the need for that particular position. You guys wouldn't even have to see it. You only would get qualified applicants to come in. We'll need to figure out a way to filter that to some degree.
So, is there like one, two, three, four down the M, A, B, C, D board? Mechanical engineer is vacant, has been for a while. So, Chris, does that, I mean, does that make life for you tough? Do you get applications? And would you, would a department head be able to come and recommend to you that, hey, we've got, here's the three appointees, or there's one, and we're good with that? From your perspective? Because I wouldn't know what a mechanical engineer.
Yes, Commissioner, and that, we do that now. We just don't have the formalized process that we would like, and that's why we like this. So, we actually have a mechanical engineer who has applied, thank goodness. We're waiting until the plumbing board is reformed before putting him forward to be recommended or to be confirmed. So, what we, in our cases, we have, since we have licensing, we have certificates, so we vet all of those when they come to us. But as it stands now, we put that out, people ask us, we vet their qualifications, we look at that, and then we just send it up. We don't have a form, we don't, a lot of our people use the city form and attach a resume to it just so that they have some, we kind of have an equitable, formalized process.
Okay. So, you are in supportive of this kind of?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because I see the next page, you've got all kinds of stuff that's...
We do. We have six total boards on there with several members.
You have the most, probably?
Yes, I believe, I believe so, Commissioner.
Yeah. Plus requirements in most of yours.
So, what is the reasoning behind one board having qualifications and other boards not having qualifications? Can someone answer that for me?
I would, yeah, let me, I would guess, like, the Board of Appeals, if somebody wants to appeal, Chris wants you, I don't want to speak on that.
Sorry, yes, and that's a good question, Commissioner. So, in our case, a lot of our slots are defined, requires a master plumber, requires a mechanical engineer or a mechanical contractor. So, we vet that they have those qualifications. So, and when we get into appeals, a stamp from an engineer, a stamp from an architect. So, if we do analyze something someone wants to do, we're going to make a call based on code, and we're going to interpret if something meets the intent of the code by having those qualifications on the board that protects us legally.
Okay, so I get that, but...
A variance too. If someone wants to apply for a variance to an architectural or a construction project, then it goes to that.
Yeah, correct, Commissioner.
So, why wouldn't we, as a planning commission, the Metropolitan Planning Commission, why wouldn't we have qualifications for that board? I mean, if we're going to be constructing our city, why wouldn't we have qualifications for that board so that we made sure that we...
I was going to answer your first question by saying it has to do with the depth of technicalness of whatever the issue is that we are advising about. The purpose of an advisory board is to provide a conduit between citizens and the commission as a middle ground, and they represent, they give best advice, best recommendation forward to the commission so you guys can make thorough policy decisions. So, in the building and construction area, it's highly technical. Maybe in mental health and aging, not so much technical, more of a human feel to that. And then you get, now you threw me for a loop with the planning commission because that rests right in the middle. There are some technical components that I could see that, but there are some that are, I mean, some of it's just land use issue discussions, and that's not so technical. It's just more of a feel, and you want a good cross-spectrum of citizens. So, I don't know. I mean, and Dale's not here. I don't know, Dave, if you want to contact, comment on that or...
Dave, you're out with planning staff. For what it's worth, I've been in this business in Kansas 46 years in several jurisdictions, including Johnson County. The issue came up many times about status of planning commissions, and it was always an issue of, one, statutes envision citizens. That's all it says.
Says what?
Citizens. So, they have to be residents of the community, don't even have to be landowners. Individual jurisdictions have decided to try to seek out people in certain aspects of businesses that are interrelated to what happens in the development community, but they don't have to. So, it's kind of a choice of the local jurisdictions. I don't think the current inter-local agreement between WISHTOP specifies any particular background or skill set or anything of that nature. It's more a matter of, we want citizens with a broad range of input from the community because the vision of the planning commission is to evaluate cases that come before, but on the plant, long-term planning, it's to promote the idea of what makes a good community. And unfortunately, it's a lot like beauty, it's the eye of the beholder. So, you get a wide variety.
Well, I love that explanation. Thank you. Well, I love that explanation, thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, and let me weigh in just a little bit, since I did serve on M A P C, and I agree with Mr. You're out, we need citizens. That, I think, is the qualification that you need. And we need citizens that are actively engaged in wanting to better their community. And that's the job that we have, is finding that unique citizen that's actively wants to better their community. And they need to have time to be able to do that, they need to have the drive, you need to understand what's in that zoning code, that zoning code J-thick. Make sure that you know what the details are, so that you can make a decision that's based on the code that's put in place. They need to understand what the comprehensive plan is, and what the details that are involved in that. They need to understand how to do plating, if they're gonna be on the subdivision committee. They need to understand how to do planning, if they're over on, on advanced plans committee. So, I don't know that there's a specific qualification to do that, other than they be a citizen that wants to better their community.
The majority of citizens don't know about plating, though, and they don't know about...
No, but you got it. What I'm, what I was trying to explain is that you need to have the, the time and the drive to learn that.
So we can't determine, though, who has the time and the drive, I mean, if...
Oh, we should be.
But if somebody comes to us, we can't write them off, just because we perceive they have this or that in their lives. And I think that that has been happening, and so we, as, I, I hope that this kind of thing will allow us to let anybody and everybody who wants to do it, they have to determine their schedule, they have to determine their drive. Do you really know how, what their schedule is until they get into it? I mean, we don't know that, they know that, and they can make the determination. I think that you've had a couple of folks who have decided they couldn't do it, because they got on there and they couldn't do it. But I think for us to just assume that somebody can't do it because this, that, and the other, I don't think is the right process to take, and this will allow the whole entire community to say, you know what, I do have time for that, I'd like to be a part of that. As of now, we don't really have the ability to let our community tell us what they want, or tell us that they like to serve.
I would take, I, I would argue with that a little bit, because I've had numerous people throughout my district reach out to me about serving on boards. So I think people do have a right and an outlet, and that's coming to us directly. I think all five of us probably have. So I would take a little bit of contention with the fact that you're saying people don't have the right just to ask to be on board.
Well, when someone goes, like, let's just take this for example, because...
We don't, you don't take this, I'm sorry, I, I shouldn't have been engaged.
You don't want to go into an example?
No, I shouldn't have been engaged, I'm sorry.
Okay.
One thing while we're still on this, there's one board on here that bothers me just a little bit, and that's Lake Afton Observatory position, because all of them are expired, according to this. And it's a very, very, very unique position, that they are, every single one of these people's names that are on here right now are people that are actively involved in making sure that that building is open, and that the public can come in and, and view. I think we ought to change that, instead of having expired on there, to serve at the pleasure of the B O C C.
And Chairman, I, I'm not familiar right now, but when we, I think we adopted, or we reached an agreement, if I remember right, about four or five years ago, Commissioner Howell, I think, was one of the commissioners at the time. That agreement probably specifies how those board appointments are set, and it may have language that says they continue to serve, so, the, the, the use of the word expired would probably just reflect that maybe their terms ended, but they're probably still serving validly, I believe, under that agreement. That's my presumption.
Yeah, because each of these individuals that are on here are very, very active in that, and I don't see that I could go out and find somebody that would be more qualified to put on one of these positions. So I don't want to say, hey, you're expired, we're gonna replace you.
Sure. And I think at a staff level, to the point you're making on that, let's say, you know, vacancy's gonna come up and a person's eligible for reappointment, I, I would imagine that Tom and county staff can come out with a way to reach out to the current folks, to let them know about this process, to apply for any vacancies, like, hey, your, your term's about to end, if you're still interested in serving, you know, please let us know. And I, they can certainly do that, and be considered amongst the...
Chairman, am I hearing you say you just want that to be an evergreen appointment? I mean, they, they never, once they're on...
If you go back here to South Central Kansas Economic Development, it says, "Serve at the pleasure of the B O C C." Why can't we just say, "Serve at the pleasure of the B O C C"?
And, and I, I will say that I didn't put everything on this document together, some of the support staff in our office did, I believe, and somebody else, Brent might be somebody who, or Lindsay who would know on this. I'm wondering if those appointments aren't term-based, or just appointed at the pleasure of the B O C C without an end date? Is that, am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay, I think Brent said that...
I think Lisa has something she'd like to say, would you mind? Sorry.
Actually, if I recall, on this particular one, not that I know all of these by heart, but I've done this book for twenty years, and not one person's come and asked me one question about process, how we do it, what's being done, or anything. On this particular board, I think the different entities appoint their own person. We only appoint you. And we've not heard back from, like, WSU and the different other ones, as to if they're gonna continue, reappoint these people, or, because we always try to contact the contact person in our book, and say, hey, we've got terms coming up, who is gonna be, you know, who do you consider to be reappointed? That's just like a lot of the, like, corrections in juvenile, they are state statute, most of the positions on there. They're, they're controlled by the state statute. The people in those positions either serve or have a designate, and they send us a note at the end of the year saying, come January one, so-and-so is being reappointed. You know, a lot of the contact people are real good to notify us without being contacted. But I think on Lake Afton, the only position the B O C C appoints is you. I think the rest of them are appointed by someone else.
I defer some to Lisa's knowledge on that, and if that's the case, we'll update the table.
Okay, good. I sure wouldn't want to tell any one of those people that I'm gonna replace them with somebody, because they are very qualified to be out there.
So, Justin, it looks like, under the, basically the second column, appointee qualifications, so it looks like some, when it says qualifying, that means they have to have some kind of a certificate or whatever.
That's correct, yeah, it's some sort of specific designation in the...
General public means anybody?
General public would mean anybody. There, one thing I would point out, and I don't think it made into this table, because it didn't really fit neatly within any of these columns I had, there's two different boards I'm aware of, the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, and the Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board. They have some specific requirements, that you can't have more than two-thirds of any particular gender.
Right.
I believe they're supposed to be at least, I forget the exact number, but I think either at least two or three of the board members are supposed to be racial minorities. And so, there are some, some very, you know, not position-specific requirements for those two boards, but diversity requirements for the board as a whole. And that, those appointments are...
What boards are those?
The Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, on page two, towards the bottom, second one up, from the bottom on page two, and on third page, the top item, Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Both those have some built-in diversity requirements.
Who set those requirements?
I, somebody rusty, or somebody may correct me on this, I think there may be some statutory requirements that require us to do that. Okay, okay, thanks, Lisa. And so I think we just follow through with what the state statute requires.
Sheriff's Civil Service has a similar deal, only it's a party-affiliated, Democrat, Republican.
That's, that's, is that listed on here? Am I missing?
I didn't hear the question.
The Sheriff's Civil Service Board, I see it on here.
It's not on this list, no.
So that, and that, that's the thing, like, I really, I, for transparency purposes, and to, I mean, I, you know, I, I've done some research about boards across, you know, there's this thing called the, the Appointments Project, and one thing that I found really just sort of crazy is that, you know, if you talk about local government, state government, federal government, and they, they give you the stats of, and I'm just talking women here, I'm not talking any other diversity other than gender, because that's what this project focuses on. So, we could get into the other side of diversity, but I'll just focus on that right now. So, in, they can't even determine county government. So, it says here, at the county, at the county level, information is also extremely limited, but what little has been collected indicates that county offices, like supervisors, commissioners, and sheriffs, are the least gender diverse. More than half of county boards across the United States have no women on them at all. And why is that? Is it because they don't know about them? Is it because somebody gets off, contacts their friend, and then their friends on there? Is that why? Why is it? So, that is what I'm trying to do. This has, I think this is a way for us to communicate what boards we have, how they get appointed, who's on there, how long they've been serving, what they actually do. People don't know. They, people just have no clue. And so it's our job to communicate that, and that's what I love, that we're doing right now. And so, in this day and age of information, as far as websites go, why couldn't we have a boards tab on our website? Why couldn't we have all of them listed? You click on it, it pulls it up, who's on there now, when their terms expire, how to apply? Like, we should be doing that. And why we're not, I guess, is just crazy. Because this stat right here, I just think we need, a pack of boards across the United States, no women at all. How, it says, that's representation at local, federal, look very different than citizens. We just have to have a job, is to be transparent and communicate what's out there. People can still apply, they could still be full of men, they could still be full of the same type of person, if that's the only person that apply, but at least we give the opportunity to anybody who wants. So if we get it out there, and then in a year or two years later, they're still full of the same kind of person, well then, we've done our job. But at least we have done it. Because right now, we haven't.
Make sure I have... I have a couple of questions, so just, because I really don't know, on bid board, is that Charter sixty-eight defined? We don't, that's just done through Charter sixty-eight, so there's no...
Right, but I mean, you guys...
...discretion on who you appoint to that board?
You mean the makeup of the actual bid board, the five?
Yeah.
That, that is driven by charter, it's driven by the order. But it's appointed, it's not a citizen board, that is a staff.
Right. And, and some of these board appointments are, are, I mean, for example, the last one on the, on the list is you, so you're staff person, but that's fine. I, I have a, just an observation, but the one sheet here says, "Recommendations for at-large advisory board appointees." This one says, "Appointments." I think "appointments" is a better word, just to clarify, there's two different titles here. I like the word "appointments," but second is a better word, I think. But second of all, the word advisory, just to...
Commissioner, what page are you on?
Well, this document, the, the policy versus this, between the two different titles, I think the word "appointments" is a better word between the two. With respect to the word advisory, I just, I guess, it seems like I'm noticing, I'm not saying that I'm right, but maybe there's a way to explain this away, but, some of these boards are truly advisory, Agent Advisory Board, or whatever that would be, it's truly advisory, they don't really have any empowerment to do something necessarily. Some of the boards actually have some advisory role and some empowerment. For example, the Plumbing Appeals Board, if someone, you know, their license was in jeopardy, and they wanted to make an appeal to the Plumbing Appeals Board, they can make a binding decision on what to do in that case. So they're empowered by the policy to do something and act, they're not really an advisory role, they're, I might just say, and some of the, some of these things really aren't advisory at all. For example, the Sedgwick County Gravance Board, I don't think is an advisory board. I think they are empowered to do what they do. So I guess I would just suggest, just a thought, maybe take the word advisory out of this title altogether, Sedgwick County At-Large Board Appointments Policy. I think that would be a better title, just, just recommendation, and maybe there's an explanation that would counteract what I just said, but...
And I'm gonna ask Justin, just for a point of clarification, on, on plumbing board, for example, or a board that has authority for a field hearing, they can make a ruling, but that person, then their next step for appeal is this board?
That's actually not, not the case.
Not true.
There, there's two settings where they might have a final determination, once, as like Commissioner Howell was mentioning, the M A B C D director can bring a license revocation, suspension-type hearing in front of those boards, in which they act as a quasi-judicial body on that license hearing. The, the means of redress, if the party was aggrieved, would be to District Court, they'd have to file a case there. Same thing on, on variances and appeals. Those boards do hear appeals, and they will make a quasi-judicial determination. That's why I think Chris spoke to why sometimes there's qualifications there, it's so that you have people who, who specifically know those codes and those requirements, because that, the next, really, the next step is to District Court, to see if a reasonable determination's been made, so...
That's a good point, then, Commissioner, I will make that...
Just, just a thought, and it's the final comment, I, I think the, the draft policy's very well done, I commend your excellent work, and I agree with the comments of Commissioner Cruz, I like the, the fact that this is kind of open and available to anybody, kind of get our attention. One thing I would say about that, though, this, this document here, just a thought, I wouldn't want to ask someone their race, or their, their age, or their sex, or their religion, or anything like that, because I don't want, I don't want that to be considered. I want that to be, you know, in fact, I, I kind of worry about the address itself, I don't know that commissioners ought to be looking at the address, because I don't think we ought to be appointing, and, I mean, at-large, well, this guy's in my district.
I think, I think they have to know that, though, for...
I think, I think Lisa needs to know, and staff needs to, I'm not so sure commissioners should be considering necessarily what, this one's in my district, I'm gonna support the one in my district, versus, that could happen. I mean, we probably, we probably know it anyway, but the reality is, I'm not sure that the district is important on this document.
Well, I, there are a few appointments to boards that I believe, I'm trying to think if there's any that are at-large appointments where district matters, because usually, if there's an appointment where the district matters, you as individual commissioners are probably making that appointment, so we might give some thought and maybe look through our boards, and see if there are any that are at-large, to the, where the district matters, because that's a good point, I hadn't really, because sometimes it does matter, but like you said, like, like you're pointing out, I think it's usually when you're tasked under the code with appointing somebody from your district, so, we might...
I, I guess my point would be that, as this comes to commissioners, it'd be nice if it has just the relevant information that's really important to us. I assume that, I guess, is the name, and probably the qualifications, that would probably be the most important thing. Anything else that might steer our, our opinion, I think, we ought to just maybe filter that out, because I don't know, we ought to be considering things that really shouldn't matter on that appointment, that's all I'm saying.
I, I have, I just, I guess, for, you know, just like any form that you fill out, optional information, I mean, you know, gender, race, I don't know that religion is all that important, but that's not even listed here, but you mentioned that, so I wanted to mention it. But I, I think that those should be, I mean, we can kind of tell by people's names what gender they are, but I think that is important. I think that's important for making sure we have, I mean, for HR purposes, I mean, if they want to give us that information, I think that they should be allowed to, I don't know that it be a requirement, but I think that that's important.
Well, to your point, I, I would like it to, everybody in the community that is, you know, diverse in every spectrum, would have the chance to, to apply equally, and I think that's the most important thing to me, that there's equal opportunity. You know, I don't know, if so, if two people were totally, you know, equivalent, and there was no difference between the two, you know, at that point, you know, if you want to look at gender as a, you know, we need more females on this board, I think that's, that's fine at that point, but, I, I don't, I, I just like the idea of qualifications being the, the main driving issue here, is that they've got some reason why they're on that board that is about their personality, or their, their connection to the issue that they're trying to advise on. That's, that's, to me, is the most important thing. I, I want, I want the greatest diversity possible, and I, I think your, your point is, not have women on these boards, just clearly showing there's, there's a problem that we're addressing, and I appreciate you so much for bringing that up. I agree with the characterization that we have a male-dominated set of boards here, that's, it's absolutely true, and I think your point is well-taken.
Well, and I, I would have to, I just want to make myself clear that I, I appoint people based on qualification. That's point-blank period. I, that's how I work, that's how I've always done, I mean, I look at facts, I don't just appoint because of some arbitrary reason. So I want to make myself clear that that's how I do business, that's how I will always do business, and I think that that's the most important thing, when I heard, yes, I will just end with that.
Thank you. Well, one final comment on the form. I like the idea of expanding this to be able to use it for all of our boards, and therefore, something like what district they're in... And therefore, something like what district they're in is important to me, because if I'm looking for somebody to serve on my citizens advisory board, I want them to serve in District Three, and not one of the other districts, if they're going to be my advisor. So there are, I, I, I believe that we need to have things like district on here, and if they choose not to answer it, that's fine, too. If I picked one up, and they sent it in and wanted to be on my district advisory, or citizens advisory board, and they didn't check that they were in District Three, optionally, I, I probably wouldn't consider them, so. I, I, I think there are some, if we're going to use this as a generic form for all of our appointments, we need the information that's on there.
Not to complicate things, I, I, I agree with your point. If it's in my, if it's in my appointment, I would like to know where, whether they're in my district or not, to me, that's more important in that case. I don't want to have two forms, but I see your point, and I agree with what you're just saying.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Manager, what else you got today?
That's all, that's it, sir. I will just say that, so, we're developing this policy, what I would consider on the fly, based on the discussion from two weeks ago, so the policy, I've noted a couple of language changes, minor language changes, but the policy will come for you tomorrow, but I want you to understand that this is evolutionary in nature, we're going to continue to work on this application, we're going to continue to work on the technology component of this, to make it as transparent and as easy as possible. We can't, we can't get that done by tomorrow, we'll continue to work on that, so.
Good. All right, staff, anything? Nothing? Anybody in the back of the room? Electeds? Anything? Tonya? Great job.
Wow.
Super.
Kudos. Nice job.
And I understand you're going to be at the water walk for the Veterans Day Parade, is it, am I, did I not hear that? Good. Okay. Anybody else in the room? Okay, let's go to work. Thank you all.
Hey, we're going to have staff, anything?